It would have a significant presence.
So this is a fake tree?
It is.
Well, can I speak to the reason we're going with a fake tree? I'm Patty Hagatow, second director of the Chamber. The reason that the committee has decided to go with a fake tree are for a lot of reasons, but the biggest reason is if we get a real tree, a 30-foot tree, you know how big that becomes when you start trying to figure out how you're going to make that stand? And then we get into engineering problems, figuring out how we're going to keep it from falling with the wind and the cars coming by. And these are designed to be outdoors, they have a way to anchor them so they're safe and no, it's not a trip hazard. And it's just a permanent solution to, you know, a problem we've had. We've had the event for eight years and every year we're trying to figure out what to do with the Christmas tree. And we hate to make the investment, but it really is the only solution we could come up with. So that's why we're looking at a fake tree.
Also, you know, we're looking at it as a large initial investment, but something that has longevity because it is a commercial Christmas tree, it withstands the snow, the winds. We did our homework, contacted people, cities that had the tree from Wisconsin all over the place where they have wind and snow and they said that they were very satisfied. It was easy to install. We've already addressed, you know, the, where we would store the tree, so we've got that covered. And we're hoping that we'll get a minimum of 15, 20-plus years depending on how well we maintain the tree. So, you know, it's something that will give us some time on that. So, we're looking to hit a mark of $15,000. And we are more than halfway there, assuming that we will get our funds from you guys. And so, we're asking for a minimum of $2,000 in order to go towards the tree. We already have, the Chamber is, or, excuse me, yeah, the Chamber, the Chamber is going to provide us with $5,000 worth of funding. I'm meeting with Teresa Phillips from El模 tomorrow to firm up the 2,500 funding, the matching funds that they provide. So, you know, that's a big, big part of it. So, we hope that you'll approve this.
If you want to speak on it, one 150-year anniversary.
No, I would not. (laughter)
I'm almost down this tree thing. So, you would take the tree down every year and just get up for a little bit?
Right. And we would store it.
And you would still get El模 and whoever else to string the lights for you?
No.
It won't need to be, it won't need, we won't need that assistance. The way the tree is built, it's built on, it's two-foot, built on itself and its own ladder. So you build it up and then you decorate it coming down. And so, we basically would just use it as its own ladder. As it gets bigger, we might need assistance from the fire department and El模, but at this point, we should be able to put it up and take it down.
And you don't string the lights independently. The lights are built into it and you just, as you build up, you plug into itself, so it's all.
So.
Pretty much, yes. And it's got, in order to anchor it properly, you install barrels that you fill up with water or sand or whatever that hang from the inside to give it stability.
My next question is, being as I were going with this imitation tree, have you talked to any of the cell, cellular phone providers to see about if they want to put up a tree and you could use that for your lights?
No, we have not thought of that idea. We weren't that creative, no.
Yeah, it's a possibility. I don't know what the cell phone company is here in the city, maybe they carry yours with them. Another option was they put up the tree and we should use the tree. I don't know, just a thought.
One of the principal towers for cell phone services in this community is right there at Frontier Building at Weatherlawn.
Oh, it is.
It is on it.
Just a thought. Do you have two questions? Do you want to move on?
Can I ask Julie? Julie, is this, did you check into the snow load or the wind?
Right, right, we did, and that was not an issue.
Okay.
So, yes.
There was one company, or one organization that had purchased that, the same tree we're looking at from Michigan, which they get quite a bit of snow. So, they said it has held up really well.
Good.
Where is this tree going?
Well, we currently, with our celebration, we always put it, the original location is at the top of Main Street, which is right in front of the Elks Lodge, and we were using the big tree. And that's where we were having all the issues with the lights and the squirrels.
Are you tearing that down?
No.
Are you cutting it down?
No.
No, no.
It'll be sat in the middle of the two trees. The trees will remain.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're not affecting the trees.
You do realize Lassen County is a forest, forested county?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, I'm slightly offended by putting up a fake tree when we're all about real trees here. I'm just slightly offended by, I'm sorry, I don't mean to hurt your feelings, but it just, it's just slightly offensive, maybe more than slightly offensive that you want to put a fake tree up in Lassen County anywhere for any reason. Because I'll tell you, I went to, a friend of mine, in 2005, the Washington DC bought a, the national tree off his property. And we flew back and watched it be set up. They do it every year. And it was quite spectacular, watching them set it up. We were there, it took longer than we thought, we had to go home. But, there's something about a live tree, and I don't know how, have you floated this by the people that live here about looking at a fake tree? I mean, I know some of these trees look so real. When my kids were small, we bought a fake tree, mainly because they were tearing up the lights and throwing things at it. But, I got so much flack from my family because most of them lived in Westwood or in a forested area, so that tree lasted one year. I don't know if you're going, not going to offend a few people by putting a fake tree up.
Our intention isn't to offend anyone. Our intention is to put up a tree that, you know, will be nice, a celebration for the event, you know, will be a good presentation.
It's always going to be a fake tree.
Right. It'll always be a fake tree. And the reason being, if you've watched a tree go up, you can see it's a major production and there's engineering. We had to dig a hole in the ground, it had to be cement, we had to have an engineering, really, it's a complete.
Did you not decorate these trees last year?
We did not last year because of the, we shouldn't have had the lights we burned and gave up. The trees are 100 feet tall, so in order to get the lights in there, you know, it's a big, it's a big job. It takes several days if you, we were to take the lights in and out, which we stopped doing that because you can't do it. We got them in there.
I'm going to suggest one thing because this is what I've done with my trees at Christmas. I have these 50-foot trees, but I go up 30 feet and outline a tree and decorate that 30, so at nighttime, you only see a 30-foot outlined tree. And that's something that you could do and it's absolutely manageable. And everybody asks me during the day, you know, that come through, they go, "Well, why didn't you decorate the whole thing?" Well, it's 50 feet tall, I don't have any facility. So we just make an outline with the lights.
But because they're a 100-foot tree, those limbs are so long that as they sway, they would tear the heck out the lights. The strings of lights would never survive.
Right. See, that was the additional problem we had, not only were the squirrels chewing the lights, but with the wind blowing, it pulls the branches back and forth and so it tears them.
Is there a better place to put a fake tree?
And we've discussed that idea and everyone kind of feels like that's, it's like the nice location, it fits our event, it's right at the top of Main, everyone sees it. So that's kind of the decision the committee's made, is to stay with our location and just try to solve it by putting an artificial tree that we can have homework control over.
We have to consider the safety of the community, we have to consider our budgetary limits, you know, all those things have to be taken into consideration, which we have because we started.
And we also have to think about how hard it would be staff-wise to get a real tree standing in that location and.
Because El模 and the fire department have already said, "Yeah, we're more than happy to help," but we can't, they don't.
They can't spend weeks on putting up a tree.
I mean, that just takes, that's money out of their pocket.
We didn't have it last year.
We had, we had a fake tree, basically. We used the flagpole as our light.
We created a light, a tree, yeah, with lights.
Okay, let's, maybe we've got to ask that. Any more questions on the tree? Eric?
How many lights do you anticipate changing every year with this new tree?
I don't know that. We haven't been told that the lights need to be changed out that frequently.
They're the LED lights and so they should last for years. And they're on the prong, so, you know, they'll all be tested before they go up, so it should be a minimal issue, so it's not like.
They are replaceable?
Yes, yes. And so, and if one goes out, it doesn't affect the string. So, it's a minimal concern.
Good, all right. Any more questions?
Oh, I was just going to say, I have, I have one of those trees, it's seven feet tall, and there's a whole section now that no longer works. And I've tried replacing the fuses and.
It does, it's not, it's not that kind. It's not like a string section because each prong is separate. And so, we would know immediately if we had an issue on, so, that should not be an issue.
Okay. Any more questions on the tree? Okay, we're going to move on then to the celebration, 150th anniversary.
I'm Patty Hagatow with the Chamber, and I'm actually here on behalf of the committee that was formed. It was a loose committee, we started talking about the county celebrating 150th anniversary this year. And the Chamber is willing to take the lead. We have a committee already formed, we're willing to do all the legwork and all, take care of all the details. Obviously, we just don't have the funds, the Chamber doesn't have the funds to do the event. So if the county would like to see the event, we are prepared to move forward and make that happen on your behalf. We just are really just asking for the funds to do it.
Questions?
Have questions?
Okay.
So what would the funds be used for, I mean, both the celebration, but what would the money be?
Well, we are hoping to obviously have food and beverages, we're going to try to have some entertainment invitations, we're going to try to be, send out official invitations to all the counties and officials in the community, do an ad, invite the community to come to the celebration, so that those kinds of things. And the number came from, the amount we're asking for came from our celebration that the Chamber had last year for the 125th anniversary that the Chamber had. And so, that's what it costs us to do our event. So we're just going off of kind of a rough framework of what it costs us to do that and applying it to this.
Questions? Can I follow?
What time is it?
So, we've selected September the 5th, it's the first Friday in September, starting at 6 o'clock, we're thinking 6 to 9, 6 to 10. And the reason that we selected that is we feel like it's still early enough in the year that the weather will be cooperative, so we can do an outdoor event, so it doesn't matter how many people come, it can be 200, it can be 500, and we can accommodate them. And we also were trying to work around other events that we know are still kind of going on in the area, just, so that was kind of how we came up with the date.
Do you do this work?
We are considering either doing it on the Rupesport Lawn area or the Memorial Park area. So one of those two locations. We debated about a couple of other ideas, including the Courthouse lawn, but some of the factors are bathrooms, water, electricity, restrooms. And so that was kind of where we came up with the locations, is those kind of accommodated those needs that we have to do that.
Okay. Eric?
Richard, you said the money would come out of discretionary funds. Explain that.
Well, there's currently, in the, last few years, the board has budgeted $20,000 per, for discretionary funds, and typically each supervisor would recommend to the rest $4,000 for each, for each. It was reduced to $20,000 for 25, I think about three years ago. And we're, obviously, we're still developing the budget for next year, but it's probably going to be my recommendation that we increase that to 25, back to 25, and that would accommodate, if the board chooses to do this, and that would accommodate these requests along with other requests that will come throughout the year.
And the board, these ladies brought this to the budget committee, and the budget committee was a supportive vote. They say that, and Larry was not, he's not here today, but he did chair the budget committee, he was absolutely, he was very much a supportive voter, and I am very much a supportive voter. So, it's up to you two to take the motion, second or not take the motion.
So, going back to this, the Christmas tree thing.
Why, I didn't take the Christmas tree, it's not big of a, you grabbed it.
Would you be willing to entertain going to the, what did you say, Volksfrontier? Where the local cell tower is?
There is a cell tower, the primary cell tower for this community is in the Frontier Building. You'll notice the big satellite signal projectors there and all the cell towers. Yes, that's where it's located. In the Frontier Building, just, what is that? On Main Street, just south of, we'll intersection of Weatherlawn and Main.
Would you be interested in approaching that and see if the aesthetics of the community, the tree up there, and it's a win-win, you get some cost share on it, and it's a win-win? Would that be something that would?
I see it as a problem just long-term because that's where that sidewalk goes between the two trees, and I think the community might be a little upset after the Christmas part of it is removed and you've got this cage thing sitting there that's a tower. I would think that that could be aesthetically not terribly pleasing.
And my other question was, even though it's going to be only up for a month, are the wires hidden up so the squirrels won't be an issue?
Squirrels aren't an issue in the winter time.
Well, and see, what you, what the issue we had with the tree was, we left the lights in year-round because it was impossible to put them up and take them down every year. So that was why we had the issue with the squirrels. Obviously squirrels like the trees, and they're probably not going to like our artificial tree. And so I'm assuming we won't have that problem.
So you see the lights come down, that would take your problems.
Well, then you luck. We hadn't thought of that soon enough.
Getting up there, I'm not sure where you're going with the cell tower.
I know, I'm just thinking of a way to get a tree up there that we could.
That we don't have to pay for it.
Why would this be invented more than anybody? I mean, why not treat you in here, you know, but I'm not sure the cell tower.
Because they put fake trees in the whole time.
That's your job, put a picture.
I'll tell you what, just to make you happy, Aaron, we'll certainly look into it and see if there's any option that would work into this, we'll be glad to look into it. I mean, it won't hurt. We're in a little bit of a time crunch because in order to order the tree, we need to kind of know we're going to have the funds within the next month or two.
Next question.
Right. Because they have to, they build it to your, you know, to your order, and then it takes a while to get it shipped and all that. So, and then of course, we're going to have to, we've never put it up before. So we're going to have to do some practicing and make sure we can get it up and, you know, do our part as well. So we're trying to order it in a timely fashion because our event is the first Saturday of December, so.
I think both these events are still very worthwhile for the county, county government to support.
I mean, the Magical Country Christmas gets an estimated for 3,000 to 4,000 people at our event. It's a great community event, it's a great way to kick off the season. And we've even talked about no tree. We've said, you know, maybe we'll just do without the tree, maybe no one will miss it. And of course, then we get it, we're complaining about no tree. So, we're trying to come up with a solution that we can actually manage and that we're not constantly asking for money from the community and from businesses.
Christmas tree, like Christmas is about time.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we're trying to make, get a tree that we can invest in and it's a long-term solution, hopefully, for at least 10, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. They tell us a tree should last 20 years, so we're hoping that's true. Hopefully find out.
So you get a warranty on that?
Pardon me? I don't know, we have to find out, though, I'll put it in writing.
Okay, what's the pleasure, board?
Are these two different deals or are they one at a time?
If you want, I'll be glad if you would like to.
Well, they don't consider funding sources.
They both come from the same money.
Both come from the same money.
One funding source, the board.
So I make the motion for the expenditure for the Magical Country Christmas Committee.
We got a motion, any second, for funding of $5,000 for the anniversary, the 25th anniversary of the tree. Any discussion? Any more questions, the Republic? All in favor, say aye. Both say no, aye to the public.
We'll do our best to make you happy.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys do a good job there.
We'll try our best. And I really thought I'd have more input for the 150th celebration, not the tree. I had no idea. Thank you.
And she didn't warn me.
I had no idea.
Okay, we move to H3, who takes first?
We want to get to the end of the table.
Sure. Yeah, running, running. Cut out right here.
I'll start off with the State of Jefferson discussion. We received correspondence from the groups that wanted to make the presentation. They're not going to be able to make that presentation until a date later than the end of July, which effectively means that to get something on the ballot, there's a deadline 88 days prior to the election. And so that is basically going to preclude putting something on the ballot as an outcome of that discussion. So I just wanted to brief the board on that for this election cycle. So, for some reason, they are unable to meet the original date and I think have changed speakers that will come and make the presentations, so.
Do you mind to get that, the State of Jefferson, which you have on the agenda, that people can't turn and speak on until a later date, which would mean too late to put anything on the ballot.
Okay. And when are they talking about moving it?
Yes, it's sometime in September.
Sometime in September, yes.
Other than that, we're, as the chairman knows, we're continuing to work on the budget, closing the gap on that. More to come on the budget. We're, we've whittled it down to about a $600,000 to $800,000 differential between revenue expense that we need to resolve, and so we're working on that every day and will continue to do so.
When do you expect to have the legislature in the room?
We expect to bring the budget in some sort of form on the 22nd.
Okay. I'll move to board member reports.
Last week, I contacted the CEO for Washoe County about the issues that we have between our counties, C.R.M.E. Depot and water. Richard followed it up, and they're, and also approached the base to have their county commissioners, they call them, come and tour C.R.M.E. Depot. And I set that up, and that's going to happen probably within a month and a half. I think it's a huge step for our county. You know, we have water issues with them, we can have open forums with them, it's all good, it's all good. And Richard followed up with an email, I think replied to him.
He has not even replied yet.
Okay, but that was the holiday weekend, so, kind of short, I'll just expect that. But, we definitely, I asked him to join the Association of Defense Communities with us, they're going to team up with us on that. So we're going to, it's nice to throw the population base that Washoe County has behind our architecture. Oh, another thing, I toured Hat Creek, the pit up there. And I don't know, some of the neighbors, do you have issues with that, I don't know?
No. No, I gotta, may I speak? Refer to.
Oops, I'm sorry, I stepped on the floor.
Iona McCain, we have a neighbor that's very new, and their ground is totally barren with bubbles, okay? And they have a real bad water problem that they haven't been able to fix.
Yes.
They're environmentalists, I don't mind them, that's great, but whatever sand or dust that comes up there, due to the eddies and stuff that happens out there in the Belfast area, it's just everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not an issue with us. Even if you put some trees on the east side of their property, it wouldn't stop the dust from flowing all over the place when it starts to blow out there about 30, 40 miles an hour.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's not a problem.
What I saw from them was a huge effort to maintain that pit. I mean, they've cleaned it up, they're doing everything right, and I would, I would urge all of, it's impressive. They have 130 employees. I would urge all of us to go tour this operation. I mean, if you want to see something being done right, that's it. I would really like to organize a tour with their board up there.
Mr. Thompson has invited the board, the whole board, if you'd like to.
It's impressive.
The facility.
Yes.
They believe we're doing a very large contract beginning later this year, and that might be a time to, from Johnson Bill to Dan.
Yeah.
Might be a good time to go when they're in the middle of that.
Okay.
When they're going great guns. And if you want, I'll set the distance up.
Yeah, please do.
And if you're not done?
That's it. Sure?
I just had two things. The first was, the stargazers, they come the first couple of days, it was kind of stormy and raining on a little bit pretty badly, because things started the last two days, it was wonderful, it was, they had a, turnout was a little bit down just because of the bad weather, but there was probably, I think there was 270 people that come and benefited me and them, so, that was the population, but even again, very weak. And the other, the other thing was, is that the Fish and Game, they're having a hearing down in Redding regarding the lab ammunition. And I forgot to go back and read the paper to see what date that was, right? I want to say it's tomorrow. The band, the lab, they can put comments in, so, hopefully our letter got to them.
Two things, last week, Brian Donnelly was here for his town hall meeting, and we had a chance to attend that, and a nice crowd, I think he did a very good job presenting, you know, the issues that he's dealing with in Sacramento, so. And the other thing is, I received a letter, actually, it was addressed to me, but it's meant for the whole board, from the Lassen Humane Society. And next Tuesday on the 15th at 1:00, they're having their annual kind of a get-together out at CCC for their Upson parole program that they have in conjunction with Susan Mary Morfis' coordinator, and she was just invited as the coordinator. So if you're interested in going out there for that, there is a signup procedure you have to go through to be able to attend. And I've got the letter here, and I'd be happy to share, we've been there a couple times in the past, so it's a pretty impressive program that they have, where the inmates take jobs and work with them, and eventually they get adopted out. So, that's all I have.
And I continue to work, we're clear with the budget committee and me and Larry and Sarah, and about Saturday, I attended the Westwood, Paul Bunyan Day, that's a book record, very nice, very, very nice event.
We were there that afternoon, it was, yeah, it was pretty impressive, the crowd, that large crowd, it was hot.
It's hot, and it's going to get all your, and I think that's.
If I could go back for a moment, speaking of hot, just want to report or share, Sunday, we had a fire right across the street. And finishing stacking up some wood, when I saw the smoke and sirens, and actually went up there. And I just have to say, the Susanville Fire Department, combined with all the other agencies that do the mutual response, I was like totally amazed at how well they did. The house, garage, that is, that fully involves this garage that belongs to the house right across the street, that was originally built by Isaac Green as his residence back in the late 1850s, early 1860s, and had been moved from its original location to that location years ago, where Bill and Maxine Ashmore lived. And unfortunately, all the homes in that block, but most of the houses occurring in Kenbury were built in the 1880s and 1890s, and had that fire spread, it could have had some pretty historical consequences, but to the fire department. But the fire department did just a fabulous job in about fifteen minutes' time. I got some good videos, so there's a chance I'll show it to you. It's amazing to watch. I think fire, all the fire departments should be doing further efforts. They had a busy day, so.
Okay, moving on, correspondence, a letter from the last economic development council we've seen in file. I guess, you know, one thirty, we have Captain Chris Plannett, he's gonna be?
Yeah, I apologize for not agendizing that early.
Shall I, it's in the motion?
Agenda, one thirty, come in. There are people that might be coming at one thirty. We do have Harry Munyon from Resource Street, he's gonna present a draft of the space plans. He'll be here at one thirty.
If I get three or, the jury, one thirty.